Just focused on the use of technology. You know, I get great grief every year about these assignment books and it's just something that I think, I realize for some people they seem to be beneficial, but in today's day and age.
Assignment books as in the agendas? Those assignment books or the workbooks?
I believe that's what they call them is the assignment books.
Yeah.
You know, it's like the yearly day planner that we give to every student and we basically force everybody to buy one and...
I know some classes don't believe me.
Do what? But they're part of the school fees.
No, they're not.
No, they take it off.
They're not, they're individual classroom fee. I mean, I was...
They take it, if you, if the class doesn't use it, they take off that $4.
Do what?
If the class decides not to use the assignment books, they take the $4 off the fee.
Well, then this must be a new development or else...
We could correct that, just a minute. That's not included in the money. So if the class chooses not to use it, it's not an additional charge.
Ah, well, I've never been lucky enough to have a class that decided to do that, but if it's not a part of these fees, then I guess I recant everything I just said.
Okay. The changes would include, just for the audience, the changes include kindergarten going from nine to $16 and then second grade coming from 22 to $16. So 22, second grade comes down and kindergarten goes out, that's where it's all at, all day kindergarten.
So really, that's about the only increase is the kindergarten.
Yeah, and there hasn't been an increase for some time since I've been told.
And could we say just for on the record what a lot of these fees go for because I honestly do get a lot of grief over these fees and you're like, "I pay my taxes and what do I have to pay?" So maybe if we could, you know, be a little more forthcoming about what are we using these fees for and...
Typically, they're classroom workbooks, they're consumables in the classroom. That's typically what they are. I don't have a detailed list in front of me, but...
And they really only touch the tip of the iceberg.
I get the hospital, Sbar's resources for your students.
Is there a sliding scale on this fee?
For free and reduced lunch?
Good.
Yeah, free is free.
Free is free, okay.
Yep. Free lunch students are free.
Now, okay, so each school, how do we handle that as far as the appropriations go?
This is, this money is not accounted for in the building appropriation or line item appropriations.
All right, so, but how do we, obviously they get the materials and everything.
That's correct.
Somebody has to pay for that. Who pays for that?
Trump fund.
Out of which account?
On top of my head, do you?
A mixture of...
Oh, oh nine, yeah.
Oh, oh nine fees?
School fees are oh nine, yeah.
Okay, but in other words, every school, school has to bear the front of the free and reduced, reduced fees.
Yes.
Or no fees, right?
Right.
Okay. Again, I have said this in the past, I still believe that we should have some kind of an indigent fund, that that would be taken out of. And the reason I say that is, is that we know that economically and so on, our schools are not equal as far as the amount of free and reduced lunch. And so you get a lot more from one school and then they're gonna have to take that out of their oh nine account, but another school isn't going to have to take as much. So I still think we should look at somehow a small amount into a indigent, whatever you want to call it, fund.
And then, and then have that be appropriated based on the free and reduced population...
And that can be then transferred into the oh nine accounts in favor of the books of those that, or whatever, of those that are not available. A lot of school districts do that.
We look at that.
I think we do do that.
Do you?
Yes, we do. We do see the forms at the end of the year, the school takes away the form and we give them credit into their oh nine to justify that.
We do do, we do do that.
Yes.
Okay, well, like, tell me when I'll spread this thing.
Well, I appreciate the education nonetheless. I mean, we learn new things every day.
Okay. All right, any, anything else on school fees? Okay, a conviral call, please.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Petty?
Aye.
Mr. Rump?
Aye.
Mrs. Schofield?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunter?
Yes.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Item K, early release Wednesdays. It is recommended that Board of Education approve changing the school building hours to reflect early release for students on Wednesdays. This will allow time for more professional development, professional learning and instruction for teachers. Details may be found in attachment number 15.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? Some of...
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have some discussion on this issue. Mainly because I think it came down the pipe really fast and there wasn't a whole lot of room for community input. I mean, basically it hit our weekly paper yesterday and this is when a majority of people found out about it outside of what we commonly call the school bubble. So I tried to do some research on it. It was a tough one to do online, but what I found overwhelmingly was that a majority of school districts that have already implemented this are now rescinding it, which, I'm gonna be honest with you, I didn't expect to find. I mean, I expected to find things from both sides, but I found that overwhelmingly this was something that didn't stick. And I also found in my research that it was something that the overall scores didn't justify in the end. And that is another main reason why a lot of districts ended up not doing it. It was a hardship on parents, which also seemed to be a large community outcry. Now, just in our own, I guess, feedback, what little bit that we got for the short period of time it's been out there, just online, I know email wise, I received one in favor of it and one not in favor of it for pretty much the same reasons just mentioned the not in favor. And the reasons mentioned, I mean, I do understand the importance of professional development for our staff and I would like to find a way that we could, I guess, find an agreeable way to do it that makes everybody happy, that seems to be a tough thing to come to a lot of times. I printed out two of the articles that I found, only because they were indicative of the many that I did find, but these two articles in particular seem to cover most of the reasons that people gave for canceling this policy in their other districts. I'm not necessarily, I don't wanna say I'm not necessarily against doing this. I think this is gonna put a severe hardship on the parents in this community. And I know that I've heard from Dr. Nichols that it worked well where you were at before and I do appreciate that. And it may, it may have worked in a different district. I'm not sure how long, I believe it's only been in effect one year there.
I, this would be the third year it's been in effect, but it was also in effect at the high school, that's district wide, but in the, in the high school alone it had been in effect for some time.
Okay, and I didn't, I'll be honest, I didn't look at the scores there to see if it proved out that it made a difference, but I, I think with the type of population that we have here in Cogga Falls and Silver Lake, we have a lot of families that have two peo-, you know, two working parents and I think a lot of this burden of picking up early one day a week will fall on a mother's shoulder, which only furthers to put, I guess, her at more of a disadvantage in the workplace than women already are. I'm not sure that this is something that will go over well here if implemented. And then when I looked at the timelines, which I just assumed because it was set an hour early on Wednesdays, I just assumed that it was actually gonna be one hour for each building and it's not. The times, to me, seemed a little convoluted to have to every week, you know, it's gonna be 2:40, then it's gonna be 1:45, or it's, you know, I mean, and then with, you know, having your job and your Boy Scouts and your Girl Scouts and your sports and your everything and trying to remember all these times, I just, I actually would rather than have to, I feel like I'm forced to vote no on this tonight because I don't have enough information on it. And rather than do that, I think what I would like to do is I move that we table this so that we could get further community input and have more discussion amongst staff and community about what we can do together to make this professional development piece work and not have such an impact on parents and, and their caregivers for that matter because it's not always parents it's impacting, it's who's responsible for those children after school, which involves a lot of grandparents and daycare centers and, so, I move that we table this.
I think we already have a motion on the table.
Right, and what, what happens in this case is if it's seconded, then we would vote to table it or not. Whether that passes or fails, then you move up to the original motion.
All right, we have a motion to table this. Is there a second? There is none, the motion dies. Okay, any other comments? Patterson?
I have my comments.
If, go ahead.
Okay, well, I said at the last meeting, and I'm a big proponent of in-service training, I think there's a couple things to consider. And I know of a district which is not in the state too, which some of these examples are not in the state. I know a district in Michigan where, in fact, I know of two districts in Michigan where it works very, very well and has really improved and has been accepted in the community, but that's neither here nor there. I just think that, you know, that school districts in this modern age, everything that keeps coming down, has got, have got to get some way to train their, their people and if that's teachers, administrators, the whole nine yards. I said too before that this is also a way that we can train our support staff, where there's a lot of safety things, there's a lot of training that we should be doing for the support staff that's sometimes difficult to pull those people away too. And when we don't have students in the building, it would be a tremendous time to be able to develop that as well. That's not on the plan here, but I'm sure we can develop that as we go and I would strongly suggest that they be involved every single time and not just sitting at their desk or sitting in their room or starting to clean early or anything like that. Anyhow, that's part of that. I mentioned too that the childcare thing is, yes, it's definitely a concern, but I think we can, we can handle that by simply going to each school and coming up with volunteers or something through the PTA, PTO, whatever it might be, to home and school, not PTO, but anyhow, coming up with some kind of a mechanism where we could provide for those families that can't do it and that can't afford it, or whatever it might be, no questions asked, that free hour or whatever it takes after school ends early to watch the children. And if we do that, that takes away the whole thing about, well, I can't get off work early, I can't make any difference, or whatever it might be. And so I just think that that has to be and should be a part of this whole thing. So those are my comments. I'm really for it. Anything else?
Well, my observation is that while it is just now coming to the attention of the public through the newspaper article, for some time Dr. Nichols has repeatedly put us on notice that the standards are gonna change and the standards are going to be significantly different and we need an approach to, to address that issue. So that's not something that's, that's, that's new to us. And also, I go back to the work that was done by the planning of the 21st century where, 21st century, yeah, that's what it's called. That one of our questions to the public was, are we preparing our students adequately? And we did not get an overwhelmingly positive response to that. As a matter of fact, it wasn't more than a third of the people responding said, "Yeah, you guys are doing a good job preparing our kids for the next level." So perhaps that suggests that there's a disconnect, that there's, there are things that are falling through the cracks that, that it might be a little inefficient or disjointed. Ultimately, the thing that I, and, and in terms of, that this is again, something fairly new on the burner, I see a whole lot of ideas and effort put into your, your three pages here in terms of what can be, what can be addressed. So ultimately, I look at improving teacher effectiveness and benefiting the students. So, and, and I appreciate your, your research, I appreciate that. What caught my eye is that their release time was 12:30 and that they gave it five years. And I think if we give it some time and we don't see that it's doing what we want to do, then, then we can take a corrective course of action.
I'd just like to add that I think that the plan that's been proposed is very detailed and I think Barb, your reflection started off our meeting with, I never walk to the plate without a plan. And many times where these professional learning communities have suffered is because a plan was not in place. Folks floundered wanting to do the right thing, but really not knowing what it was they were supposed to be doing. But with the detailed orientation this plan presents for each of the hour releases, I think that it sets a framework for the kind of work that can take place during that hour. I certainly respect Ms. Patterson's point about parents because we always need to be sensitive to any inconveniences we may be causing by decisions that are made. And whatever can be done between now and the start of the first release, I think should be done. But in terms of teacher development, in terms of student achievement, I think this is a step in the right direction.
I had thought about tabling this issue as well. And the reason I did not bring that forward second is because our next meeting is not until August and that really does not give parents anywhere near enough time to plan for the release if it were to pass, so that was scratch. I'm not gonna sit here and say that I don't have concerns on both sides of the tables because I clearly do. Taking away an hour of instruction time once a week, which equals what, six days out of the school year, could be significant for some of our lower achieving students. It could be significant for them. The other side is because I myself have engaged in quite a bit of professional development this year and feel like I'm very well prepared for what's coming down the pipe in 2015, that we're not ready. We're not ready and I think it's a prime shame that the newspaper has not chosen to write about the changes in testing that's gonna come up and has chosen to write on some of the other subjects that they have chosen to write about. We certainly had Dr. Nichols discuss this with us at the beginning of June, what the after school got out, is when it first came forward and that meeting was recorded, anybody could listen to it. But when I sat down and thought about this and thought about it, because I have had people in my ear this weekend who were against it and I had people in my ear who were for it, and when it came down to this, what is in the best interest of the community, of the children and of the school district? The community needs strong schools. To keep strong schools, we have to be ready for that new test. We have to. No ans and sirb's about it. If we are not ready, we're gonna, we're gonna fall further than where we are and it'll be, it'll take us a while to catch back up to get to where we are. And the only way to do that, other than paying the teachers and asking them to stay, then I have to ask for more money. The community needs strong schools. The students need the teachers to be prepared to get them ready for the test. I think this is something that is much better prepared and rolled out than 9010 was. I certainly think the school district fall behind. I want to see us to keep moving forward. I want to see our children achieving greater.
Based on a year's worth of saying, "We need more time to gather our administrators and our staff, looking at student data and citing ways that we can improve our instruction and differentiate and individualize our instruction in the classroom," that if I was gonna go out on that limb and recommend this schedule, that they would have to guarantee me, that they're going to give it 100% and, and make it effective in the, in the building. I did a couple of quick math pieces in terms of, you know, it's all money, it's all district money and it comes out of our pockets in one way or another. And essentially, 400 teachers for 36 weeks at $30 an hour, which is professional development rate, they're about, just round numbers, equates to $432,000. So buying $432,000 of professional development. I'm going to insist upon this, working well in the buildings and everybody giving it their utmost attention to follow the schedule that we put forth. We also engaged the staff in 1,700 days of professional development issue. This room, sitting next to my office, was full almost every day the past year of teachers who were not in front of kids, okay? And so I've heard an awful lot of that from the community as well, that there's often a substitute in my classroom and, and so we would look to at least reduce that number in half. That would be one of our data points that we would look at. And we provide the professional development and then if we need to, instead of paying substitutes, we would pay our teachers to stay that extra two or three hours after the Wednesday early release when things are already rolling, if it's necessary. And, and our teachers that have sacrificed over the last few years in terms of taking freezes and insurance increases and those kinds of things, you know, they, they perhaps benefit a little bit as well. And we're spending the money, may as well put it in the hands of our professionals as, as opposed to our substitutes. And perhaps spend less of it, that's the goal. It's not just the assessments that are coming down the road and the assessments are significant. The changes associated with the Partnership for Assessment and Readiness for College and Careers, PAR, assessments, their standards are going to be what we've been used to as accelerated and advanced. We've been told that, plain and clear. In terms of PISA, Program for International Student, Student Achievement, their equivalence would suggest that our, what we enjoy now as 90% proficiency rates will quickly drop to 40% proficiency rates in our early grades in reading. Those two things kind of match in terms of accelerated and advanced. And we have about 50% of our students that are accelerated and advanced now, which in a few short years, we're two years looking at that being proficient. There's, the OGT will be replaced. We'll be replaced with a series of end of course assessments and then, for lack of better terminology, an ACT-like piece, that it'll be a blended graduation requirement based on all of those pieces. It will be significantly different. The PAR assessments are all online, are all web-based. Currently, we, our kids haven't participated in a lot of online assessments, very few. We're making the transition to I-Ready this school year, which is a PAR-like assessment based on the Common Core that is web-based. Well, that's not gonna come easy. That's not gonna come easy for our students, it's not gonna come easy for our staff. And in terms of real data analysis, you must triangulate your data, in other words, student achievement data. It has to be based on your state and national assessment data, which is, PAR will provide for us. And I-Ready then takes care of our local common assessments that are on a shorter term basis than just more of the one-year snapshot. And then that also needs to be triangulated with a third piece, which is your grade distribution in the classroom. If we're giving As in the classroom and students are achieving at proficient levels, those two things don't match. And if they're achieving at, at proficient levels on I-Ready and then ultimately achieve at proficient levels on, on the PAR assessments, now DOAs, OGTs, which are really light comparatively to what they're going to be, if those three pieces don't match and our people don't have time to look at that data as a group and to make decisions for students on an individual basis based on that data, there are no way we're gonna be ready. The other piece to it is, next year, at the end of next year, we have to have a plan in place for teacher evaluation system and principal evaluation system, the 50% of it is based on student achievement. That 50% will come directly from our I-Ready tests and our PAR assessments or OA, OGT pieces. That's where that'll come from, okay? All of these things kind of come, are coming together in a perfect storm. Our demographics in Cogga Falls, I've been told over, over, over this year, that the demographics are changing. I've been told that over and over again. The fact of the matter is Bullock is now 50% free and reduced lunch. What we've enjoyed, what we've enjoyed as students that come, that, that have family backgrounds that are, that are such that they can, they do well in spite of the instruction, that demographic typically changes when you experience higher rates of free and reduced lunch. Because of things like Ms. Patterson points out, people are working harder, they're trying harder to keep up and so what gets lost in the mix a little bit is, is students. And so, yes, I promise you, promise you, that if, if it is not effective, if it is not effective, we will scale back, but it needs to be given some time. And our principals and our faculty who have been asking strongly for more time, I'm out on a limb for you tonight, you gotta make it work for me. It has to work. And if it doesn't, we gotta back down.
Well, I won't push you on that even further because I'm gonna ask you to include in our quarterly meetings, um, updates that...
Fair enough.
On how these, and one more thing and then I'm gonna be finished with my comments on Sunday, because I do wanna thank you for bringing this to the board because clearly you did not have to. You could've gone ahead as 9010 did without board approval. And so I respect you for bringing this to the board and asking for the board to back down. Thank you.
Well, we have to operate as a team in this district, we have to.
And I will interject this because, and I do appreciate everything that you said, but, but one of the things that really kind of stuck with me is that you said the staff has been asking for more time for this, but three and a half, four years ago, I sat here and the staff was asking for more instructional time with the students. And we added an hour per week to all of our buildings to, because this was the problem then, that we needed more instructional time. So now we have that more instructional time, now three years later, we're taking it back. Now we don't need that instructional time, now we need this other time. And I mean, I'm gonna be frank with you, I, I feel like my kids are a giant experiment here with all these different initiatives that, that have to change everything all the time with them. In the meantime, they're lost in the shuffle.
Mm-hmm.
Consistency, I'm told, is so important and in fact, it's mentioned in one of these articles that I printed out about, that the consistency with kids was another thing that upset parents about these changes. And that's not important now anymore either. It's, it's, I just, I'm, I'm really, I'm dismayed that the, the motion to table this wasn't seconded, but so be it. I think that we really should take time for more input from the people who live here and I, I guess, there was one other thing I wanted to add too. The suggestion by President Rump to form these, I guess, basically after-school babysitting thing, I mean, I don't know about what our insurance says about that, but I certainly want and wanna take on the liability on the backs of the taxpayer to implement... want and want to take on the liability on the backs of the taxpayer to implement basically what amounts to babysitting clothes and making us responsible, or what I feel where we would be responsible for volunteers taking care of people's children, that does not sound like a smart thing to do.
Just in response to that, this is done in a lot of school districts around our whole, 12 counties in the northeastern Ohio area.
Do you know of any?
Yes, I know a lot of them.
Who?
Well, I don't want to get into that.
I mean, I'd just like some research.
I don't want to get into that, we can talk about that another time. But I'm telling you that it's done as a method of getting this done. And so I just think it's a way to do it. Yes, is there a liability factor if it's not well organized, if it's not, it's like anything else, if it's not organized enough to where you still know what's going on, and, you know, then it could be a problem. But it is a way to do it. I'm not talking about older kids in that school being the babysitter for that kid. I'm talking about mothers that would volunteer their time to PTA, that sort of thing.
Right.
High school students that might be able to help with that and have hours that would be given to them, you know, through the volunteer hours and all of that, the thing that they have to do. I think it's a very, very good idea myself.
Ms. Patterson, I understand what you're talking about in terms of getting pig issues. I think all of us school districts kind of feel like we're in that situation too, because of our, all the rules have constantly changed in our situation. And this is clearly a response to our rules changing.
Well, that would be my final comment too, is as we know, things always change, and as we come to learn that teachers have to teach differently, this is a proactive approach. And I appreciate that.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? All right, do we have a little?
Mr. Petty?
Aye.
Mr. Rump?
Aye.
Mrs. Scofield?
Aye.
Mrs. Scunther?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Motion approved, quarter one.
All right, next we have board business in the future, is to complete the registration form, which is in the back of the evidence book, and to present it to the treasurer. The time allotted to each speech is three minutes. And also, I would like to tell you that your comments should be addressed to Chairman of the Board, here the President. And we do not normally answer any questions, or we do not take public affronts against any of the board members. So, we have, Jen Klein, is it?
Klein. Klein.
Klein. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I was writing fast.
Jen Klein, who would like to talk to us? Could you rise, state your name, and then also your address?
Jennifer Klein, 2044 Third Street. I just, I guess my comment is, going back to the early release and like you just stated, I'm not sure this is, I'm new to this, so I didn't know that you couldn't answer questions. But I guess my concern is, we're still going to have that hour release, early release, which is taking six days away. But the amount of subs that we had last year, from the sounds of it, it's not, it's going to decrease a little bit?
No.
But not a lot.
Significantly.
Significantly. Because going with what Ms. Patterson said, the continuity between, you know, there were days where we'd have two subs in a row that were completely different. And my son came from a class that had a lot of special needs, and there was nothing done on those days. Absolutely nothing done, because the subs couldn't handle, the, you know, I mean, it just, it was chaos. There was never homework brought home. You know, I mean, if we could even come up with a way to have some continuity between the subs, which if they know that they're going to have training on Monday, we line those subs up and say, from every Monday, every other week or whatever, you are going to be Mrs. so-and-so's sub. You know, if we could have some continuity between the subs, I think that would make a huge difference. And then going with what President Rump said, I come from DeWitt, and we are a strong PTA, and we struggle to get volunteers. And the fact of trying to get volunteers to babysit other people's childrens for an hour on Wednesday, I just don't see that flying. I honestly don't, sir. It's, like I said, we have a strong PTA, and we are fighting left and right to get volunteers. It's a core group of people that are there in and out, and we have children that we have to take care of. You know, we have soccer practices to get to, and if we've got that hour, it changes our schedules completely. As a stay-at-home mom, it changes my schedule completely. So while it would be nice to say the PTA would help out with that, I just don't think that's, it's a reality, honestly.
I do have a question on that.
Yeah.
Do you use volunteers during the day in the school?
We are, our school, like I said, DeWitt is very strong in their PTA. We do all of library, we do all of our tutoring, we are teacher aides. Our parents are incredible in that school. But to add one more hour a week is a lot to ask for parents, because we take time out of our kids. I have a stay-at-home, I have a little girl. I take time out to do library, so my kids have a librarian, because if I'm not there, they don't have library that week. And there are times when there is just one parent in that library taking care of that classroom of 30 kids. And to ask and add on another hour is, I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it really is when you're taking away time already from your other children. So, I just wanted to, thank you.
All right. Comments from the and/or committee reports from the Board of Education members?